There we go.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Oxford, the whole meeting for the month of January. It started right away, called this meeting to order. First off, we need a motion to approve for approval of them of the agenda. So moved by Council Jones. Can I have a second or seconded by Deputy Mayor Edgett? All those in favor of approval, raise your hand. Carried. Next up, a motion to approve the previous minutes of the previous meeting. So moved by Council Black, signed by Council McNutt. All those in favor, raise your hand. And motion carried. Good. Okay, next up, we have a presentation from Mr. Paul Beasley. He's with the Property Evaluation Services Corporation. And basically, he is, this is a company that sets the rates for the various houses and industries in Oxford. I think it's industries as well. He's going to fill us in. So turn the floor over to you, Mr. Beasley.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I've got a presentation, a PowerPoint here tonight. And it's typically a thirty or thirty-five minute PowerPoint. But I'm going to, Linda, Linda just said that I need to have it done in twenty minutes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna power read through the PowerPoint. And I see Linda's putting it up on the screen there. So, Your Worship, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, counselors. Appreciate you having me in tonight. Hopefully, I can give you a little bit of information about what we do. Hopefully, a few good questions come up. So if I see you waving, or if you can get Linda's attention, or, or Mayor Henley's attention, then by all means do so. If you want to stop me in my tracks and ask some questions, that'd be just fantastic as well. So Linda, you're able to flip the slides for me. So let's get it going. And I'll, I'll go through the first few quite quickly. And for, for the sake of an agenda, we have one. But I think the heart of what I'll be talking about starts with key dates, cap overview, and the assessment role. So go right ahead there, Linda. So the first, you know, first up, I just want to say today, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the value of Nova Scotia properties is up over eight percent for two thousand and twenty-two, bringing the total value of assessments to one hundred and twenty-four point six billion across Nova Scotia. Now, of course, it's, the amount that goes up all across Nova Scotia varies between area to area. But we'll talk about that a little bit later. But Property Evaluation Services Corp. mailed out more than six hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred property assessment notices to Nova Scotia property owners today. So they are appearing in mailboxes as of today. So it's going to be, this time of year is probably when you will get more questions than any other time of year, except for when the tax bills goes out, goes, goes out in regards to assessments. So now, and then the spring after tax bills go out. If you're in the grocery store or on the street, and someone's going to ask you a question, it's probably about assessments, probably right about now. So Linda's timing on this one, as far as having us come in, is perfect. Who is Property Evaluation Services? We're not for profit. Many people believe that we are the province still. We were right up until about two thousand, but ever since, we're not for profit. Our, our rules and regulations around the Property Evaluation Services Corporation Act and the Assessment Act. And PVSC is funded by the forty-nine municipalities, based on a funding formula, all part of your budget. Okay, Linda, you might as well go to the next one. So what we do, we assess the value of over six hundred and thirty-eight thousand properties this year. The Assessment Act requires that we assess every property. We deliver the assessment role to the forty-nine municipalities, which we did in December. We deliver property assessment notices to property owners every January, starting today. And we administer the cap assessment program. We didn't write the cap assessment program, but we administer it on behalf of the province. What we can't do is we do not have legislative authority to set property tax rates. That's up to you folks. The municipalities themselves and the province are the taxation bodies. We do not collect property taxes. We don't create property tax policy. Once again, that's up to you folks to do under your legislative authority in Municipal Government Act. And we don't provide property tax relief, although there are an awful lot of people phone us asking if there's some way that, you know, their assessments can be adjusted, reduced, or whatever. Also, what we don't do is, we do not administer the land program. That's under the red, the land registry. And we don't go out and set survey lines or, or set the property lines. The registry, the land registry provides that information to us. And the land registry provides us with a, an AAN and a PID number, once they have established the property. So a lot of properties owners out there may ask you about, you know, the acreage on their property or something along that lines. The registry determines the acreage and what the actual property is, as far as the land size. So, all right, Linda, next one. The Nova Scotia Assessment Act requires that we assess property at the market value. As we had been talking before the meeting, we do assess at market value. It's the amount in which the opinion of the assessor, it would be paid if it were sold on the date prescribed by the director. We'll get into that date a little bit as we go along, in the open market by a willing seller and a willing buyer. So there are a lot of situations where there's some type of corporate interest or family interest or undue influence or could be tax sale, could be, you know, bank foreclosure, not necessarily market value. They can be, but not necessarily. So there's a lot of instances whereby the price at which that sale occurs may not necessarily be the market value. Okay, go ahead, Linda. I think we can keep moving on there. We talked about the number of property accounts. We use mass appraisal. We do not, we're, we are not single or one property appraisers. Like you may contact or have come to an appraisal during, if you're doing bank financing or some type of situation such as that, we do mass appraisals over all the properties across the province. We break it down into municipalities and into neighborhoods. For instance, in Oxford, there's six or seven neighborhoods, which can be homogeneous type areas, like saying downtown residential or residential on the periphery, downtown commercial, that type of thing, industrial, those types of neighborhoods. So we look at all that market data in order to do mass appraisal. We look at sales around the province. Typically, there's some thirty-five to forty thousand sales around the province that we look at. This past year, forty-one thousand sales. And it looks like we're on track this past year as in for the two thousand and twenty-two assessment role, which is just coming out, some forty-one thousand. For next year's two thousand and twenty-three role, we're tracking more towards fifty thousand sales across the province. So you can see that there's been quite a vibrant market over the past year and a half, two years. We'll talk about that a little bit more as well. So what is mass appraisal? It's a process of valuing properties using common data, standardized methods, and statistical testing. So we look at the market based on a number of sales in homogeneous, homogeneous areas. And it's as efficient, efficient and effective way to do it and recognized by internet, international standards, which we abide by and, and maintain every year. Go ahead, go ahead, Linda, for the next slide. So what influence market value? You probably all know the influences, many of the influence for market value, I guess, location's one of the big factors. Downtown HRM versus other areas in the province, there's a big difference. Type of the age, type of building. The one thing that's not on here is global pandemic. I suppose you might say the global pandemic now could be a factor which influences market values. But I guess we could put that down as location, and a lot of people are coming to Nova Scotia because of the safety, or they feel it's safe to come here and relocate. All right, Linda. So where do we get our data? Discussion with property owners is definitely number one. We reach out to property owners on every opportunity we have. They reach out to us. Believe me, we get a lot of phone calls, a lot of inquiries from property owners. And we will, over the course of the next month or so, we will get as many as any other time during the year because of the notices are going out. We talk to property owners, we inspect properties. We make appointments with property owners. So if anybody has questions of you in regards to assessments, just let them know to contact us. We'll reach out, one way or another, we'll try to answer the questions. The difficulty this year, as you can appreciate, not this year, the difficulty anytime is obtaining contact information such as phone numbers. Everybody has a cellphone now. They're all unlisted, and it's very hard to get ahold of people. So any assistance you can give us in that regard by referring them to us, greatly appreciated. We get information from the land registry, as I indicated. We review all the sales every year within the province. Building permits that are issued by the municipalities, we look at everyone. Income and expense surveys for commercial properties that are valued on an income basis, based on the income they generate and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We do a lot of field inspections as well. Okay, Linda, we'll go to the next one. So we typically operate on a annual cycle. So we'll start here in January, because the timing is perfect. We mail it right at the top, we mail out property assessment notices. So when we mail out those six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, each property owner has thirty-one days, which is called the inquiry period whereby they can contact us and they can appeal their property assessment if they so desire, for whatever wish, whatever reason they wish to appeal it for. And so when we receive those assessments, typically, last year was close to six thousand. When we see, receive those appeals, I mean, we'll contact every property owner and talk to them about it. Doesn't mean that we'll, we'll be able to satisfy their concerns every time, but we will discuss it with them and make it as a decision on that appeal. We finalize sales review as we go through February and March. We spend a lot of time with the appeals and talking to property owners. We also send a mail, we mail out income and expense statements to various commercial properties to get information from them on the, on the income that they earn on their properties. We're completing sales reviews for the next assessment role. And, and we do our reassessment for the next assessment role typically in May and June. Then the permit period hits whereby we're hitting the roads and, and, and the properties around the province whereby we're inspecting permits. Some twenty thousand permits a year is what we typically inspect. And all of our assessors go out and look at the properties and determine what, you know, what state of the property is. In October, we're conversing with commercial agents and owners for the upcoming assessment year. And come December, December first, we have to have the, the assessment role pretty much completed. And we send it off to the municipalities in December, so that Linda can take a look at it. If she sees any discrepancies or errors or, or whatever, she'll let us know in December. And we start all, we mail out the notices in January, and we start all over again. So it's a busy time every year. Under the Assessment Act, we must provide an assessment every year, a new assessment for the province. All right, Linda. So key, key dates in the assessment process. Let's start right in the middle with January the first, two thousand and twenty-one. So this is based on this year's assessment. So January first, two thousand and twenty-one. That is the date that is called the, the base date of the valuation of the assessment. So two thousand and twenty-two assessments, so the assessments that people are getting right now reflect property value as, as of January first, two thousand and twenty-one. So essentially, one year back. It's based on market value sales that occurred during the two thousand and twenty calendar year. So if you go backwards on that scale, you'll see January two thousand and twenty is the start of that, that line. So from January first, two thousand and twenty through to January first, two thousand and twenty-one, we are collecting all the market data on sales through that period. And we are actually reviewing it into the two thousand and twenty-one, into the middle of two thousand and twenty-one. So that first year, year and a half, we are collecting sales data on all those sales for that particular year. Now you'll see in March, two thousand and twenty, on the left there, that is approximately when COVID really came into being in Nova Scotia. That's when people started to realize that there was something happening as far as this COVID pandemic. So through that period, we're collecting data. Really, the first half of two thousand and twenty, there wasn't a whole lot of impact as far as the markets go on COVID. It wasn't until middle of that year and onward toward the end of the year that people started to, to look at purchasing properties in Nova Scotia. So, you know, there was inventory out there, there was a, a properties. So they started to get snapped up. So through the end of two thousand and twenty, little more demand into two thousand and twenty-one, that demand has continued, and it rolls right through to two thousand and twenty-one. The sales in, in through two thousand and twenty-one will be for the two thousand and twenty-three role year. So up until December first, two thousand and twenty-one, as you'll see to the right, December first, two thousand and twenty-one, the two thousand and twenty-two assessment also account for physical changes, like renovations, additions, any permit work that's being done. We account for that right up to December the first, two thousand and twenty-one, in making the role for two thousand and twenty-two. So not only are the market sales for two thousand and twenty included in the values and the market conditions, also any permits, inspections, additions, those types of work order, types of work we do up to December first will be included in the values as well. So then you move forward to January, we send out the assessment notices as we had indicated. And then by February the tenth this year, that's the deadline for people to send in their appeals to us if they feel that the value is not accurate. Next, next slide, Linda. So there's what the role looks like across the province. I'm not going to spend too much time on it. It's big numbers for sure. Residential assessment was essentially up eight point four percent there on the left with the cap reflected in it. Actual market assessments are up a little more, but the cap tends to be, tends to mitigate that a little bit. So up eight point four percent across the province. Along the bottom, permits, we investigated about fifteen thousand permits this year, forty-three thousand sales. I guess a little higher than what I indicated, almost six thousand appeals. And property owners called us close to twenty-three thousand times last year. So it keeps us busy. Next, next slide, Linda. So here's the numbers for Oxford. It gets into the, the really big numbers around the province are hard to really, you know, digest sometimes. So here for Oxford, just want to make sure I got my sheet in front of me, because it's a little harder to, a little easier to read. But so on this particular chart, it shows a change from twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. The all residential assessed value at the top is the market value assessment without the cap impacting it. So really, that fourth line down where it's residential with the cap, that's what would be of more, of greater interest to Linda because that does reflect the cap, once it's been calculated, and it's in there. So for budget planning purposes, that number along that line, which indicates a three point three nine percent increase, or at least that's what's on my form, three point three nine percent. That's what the change in assessment was from last year to this year for the town of Oxford. That compares to just under one half of, one half of one percent last year. So one half of one percent is up to three point three nine percent this year. And that is primarily reflective of the fact that the cap was at five point four percent this year. So between market and cap, you received a bump of about three point four percent. Under the commercial assessed value, pretty much flat across the province. It's pretty much flat on commercial assessment overall. Probably the sectors that took a little harder hit may be the ones that are income related, like hotels, motels, some of the larger apartment buildings, apartments did okay through the COVID period. But hotels, motels, those types of things, you know, had a fairly difficult time. And then there's the exact commercial being relatively flat too. So, so I think essentially, you know, the cap and, and the residential taxable is a bigger number. But, you know, that taxable commercial, of course, would include, you know, Oxford frozen food. Those, you know, to a great extent, Oxford frozen food is in that taxable commercial category. So next slide, I think, Linda. So the cap assessment program, I indicated that it's administered by us, section forty-five A of the Assessment Act. The cap is intended to cap the annual increase in the taxable assessment for eligible, eligible residential properties to no more than the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index every year. So that's reported by the province in October. It was five point four percent this year, which is higher than it typically has been. Eligible, you need to be a Nova Scotia resident to be, or fifty percent of the property has to be owned by a Nova Scotia resident. The Nova Scotia resident definition of, they have to have, be in the province for at least half of the year to be a Nova Scotia resident, considered to be that, less than four dwelling units. And, or cap remains if it remains within a family, a family sale type of situation, immediate family. All right, I think we can go on. I, I guess with the cap, I just wanted to remind that that came in initially back in the early two thousands, essentially because the value of properties along the South Shore were going up, water view, water, you know, ocean side properties that were going up quite substantially. So the cap was put in place to sort of ease the pressure on those landowners along the coast that couldn't afford for big increases in assessment values and hence higher tax rates. So that was brought in, into place. In a COVID situation, it's similar in that if values are going up, it provides a little bit of that break, you know, to, to ease the growth of, of the market in that situation. Like I said earlier, it wasn't, really didn't anticipate a situation such as COVID and pandemics for it. But it certainly is reflective this year of sort of what's happening across the province in general. Like I said, cap rate is five point four percent. If you look at, well, year two thousand and twenty, cap rate was five point four. Then if you go down, that's what the cap rate has been in previous years, the last five years. So you can see five point four percent is considerably higher this year as a cap rate or CPI rate. You'll see how many properties are capped, and you'll see the cap impact, which is the amount of market value that isn't included in the overall provincial assessment due to the mitigating factor of the cap. So it can be a pretty big, big number for sure. Next one, Linda. I know I'm pretty much running out of time. So the thirty, thirty-one day inquiry period, inquiry period has started today. They have to have it received by us by February the tenth at midnight. Anything after that is considered a late appeal. A late appeals can be appealed to the Nova Scotia Assessment Appeal Tribunal based on the fact that it's late. You can appeal it, you, you know, they will look at the reason why it's late. It may or may not be accepted. You know, if you're out of the country, you've probably got a pretty good reason, and it will probably be accepted. If your dog ate, ate your assessment, it may not be accepted as a late assessment. So review it. If anybody's asking you, tell them to review closely and get it in before thirty-one days down the road, and make sure that we get it. Our phone number, the eight hundred number. We also have our email and website, which they can send them through. We have secure drop boxes in Truro, up in Sydney, and in Derby, Truro, Sydney and Derby. People can drop them off there. And if anybody's asking you, they can take a photo of their assessment, as long as it's signed, and they put their contact information on it, and they take a photo, they can email that photo to us. So there's many ways that they can get it to us. Linda, next one. That's what a notice, assessment notice looks like. If someone does not have the cap, that red circle, that column with the red circle in the middle called capped assessment, that will be blank. And it says right on the notice that if you are no longer eligible for the cap, you will not see a number in that column. But people may ask you, you know, and they may say, why did I lose my cap? Well, as you, you as a counselor, you know, we would not expect you to know that answer. So refer them to the eight hundred number, we'll gladly answer or attempt to answer why they may lose their cap. A lot of people lose their cap this year. And in, for instance, in Oxford, last year, sixty-six percent of your residential improved properties were capped. This year, it's down to, I think, twenty-one percent. So far fewer of your properties are on the cap. So they may say, I lost my cap. And why did I lose my cap? And, and you could answer them by saying, look, CPI was five point four percent this year. So you may have lost your cap because of CPI going up, and you may now be at the market rate, which, which is a benefit because the Assessment Act requires that you be assessed on the lower amount, the market value or the cap value. So in this case, if it went up five point four percent, that might have put you above the market value, and you would have lost your cap. So, but like I say, just have them give us call. We'll try to explain to, to, and go from there. I think that's about it. I think I'm over my time by probably three or four minutes. I'll open it up to questions. You can go to the website and with a pin, you can go in and get information about your assessment.
Okay, thank you, Paul. That was very informative. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Edgett, the question.
Yeah, Paul, what's considered a commercial exempt?
Commercial exempt would typically be properties that are owned by a municipality that don't pay taxes on those properties, or by the provincial government, or by the federal government, such as the school, hospitals, your municipal building. Those types of properties are typically the commercial exempt properties. There can be churches, which may sound a little unusual to you, but churches are considered commercial properties. They are exempt under the legislation. The reason they are commercial properties is because commercial is a default, more or less a default category of, of the assessment categories. So we have residential. Pretty easy to understand what residential is. It's either, you know, it's something where people are living, such as apartments and houses and, and manufactured homes and those types of things. We have resource, which typically are vacant, not improved, or, or properties without improvements, they're vacant, and typically can be forested or farmed or just sitting idle. And the default, if it's not resource, or if it's not residential, it's commercial. And that's, and churches fall into that category.
Anyone else have a question for Paul? Well, I, I do, so I'll ask it. You mentioned something about you checking out building permits. Now, I know some people on occasion will live in a partially completed new build. You mentioned something about uh, you checking out building permits. Now, I know some people uh on occasion will live in a partially completed new build.
Yes.
Um, and it used to be always the houses that didn't have a front step in. Completed. Um. How, how does that work? In this day and age? As far as if someone neglects to put a front step on their house, the. That impacts on the value?
So some, someone asked me about that the other day and I said, look, you know, I said. If it's substantially complete, as far as I'm concerned. Then we should put it in as a completed property. Now, I don't know. If all billing codes require that there be two. Two egress points or, or not, and whether a step um. Constitutes non egress. If it's, you know, so many feet high, I'm not sure what the code is or anything like that, but. Um, in my opinion, if it's substantially complete, we work in the mass appraisal field whereby. Uh, our aim under the international standards is to be within ninety percent and a hundred and ten percent of the true market value of the property. So um. We're not, you know, we're not going to get hung up on one percent. Um, you know, i- if we assess a property and we say this is a substantially completed property and we're within that range. Then um, it's gonna be, that's what we're gonna assess it at. We're not gonna say, we're gonna take five hundred dollars off for. You know, one tenth of one percent not completed or something along that line.
Yeah, thank you. Um, does anyone else have a question for Paul? Well, uh, I want to thank you for your taking time out of your schedule tonight, Paul. It's been very informative. And uh. Like I said, we'll be in touch as soon as we start to hear from people, if we start to hear from people. Do you have any questions, Linda?
I know, that was a great presentation. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry for rushing through it so, so quickly and uh. I would much prefer to be up there in front of you in person. I'm much more comfortable that way, but uh. Uh, these virtual days, I'm just pleased to be able to get in front of you and uh. Explain and if you do get some questions, my main message is ask them to give us a call. Or an email.
Oh, thank you. It's been an excellent presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. Good night.
Good.
Okay, next on our agenda is uh. You've got this in your package, uh, summer job, uh, can the summer job grants available? Deadline for that is January twenty fifth. You were gonna say something on that, Linda?
Uh, yes, uh, the. The summer jobs, uh, we're looking into that right now and um. We are sending in uh for the application on that and uh I've sent an email out and I've gotten a little bit of feedback there and uh. We're just gonna proceed and um. Apply and hopefully you get awarded with some great skills from our um local students.
Excellent. Okay, next on the agenda is dangerous and slightly matter, an update from Linda.
Thank you, your worship. So I just, just wanted to update council. Uh, we're continuing with the dangerous man slightly properties and uh. We're currently working on another case here in downtown, um, downtown here in the core and um. Just continuing with the council support and moving forward. So. Just uh, if anyone has any issues, just to bring them forward to our office here and uh we'll address them as, as we go forward.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next up, reports Brenda Rue. Uh, solid waste in education contract coordinator, there is a. Uh, attachment in your package is sweet, so that's pretty well covered unless someone has questions for Linda regarding that. And I'm not seeing any questions. Uh, we show no correspondence. Our next meeting of Cal will be uh Monday, February the uh seventh. Twenty twenty-two, so we'll be back on our normal schedule then. Um, and that is it for the uh, for tonight's meeting. So we just need a motion to adjourn. So moved by councillor Jones. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.